Should be good. Sam, could you please mute your microphone?
Yeah, I muted it. Thank you. Let's try this one more time.
Roll call please. This is Yetsey.
Here.
This is McCarthy.
Here.
This is Saxon.
Here.
This is Tamira.
Here.
Mr. Vaca. Here. Finalization of the agenda. Is there anything to add in or leave?
No, the agenda is final as presented.
Thank you very much. As recommended, the Board of Education approved the written summary of the regular minutes for the meetings on September 7th, 2021, and September 21st, 2021.
Boomed.
Move on to Ms. Saxon. Second by Ms. Tamira. Roll call please.
This is Saxon.
Yes.
This is Tamira.
Yes.
This is Yetsey.
Yes.
This is McCarthy.
Yes.
Mr. Vaca.
Yes. All right, we'll right into the superintendent's report.
Thank you very much. Once again, it is time to begin to recognize students and staff members that make up this great school district, and I am excited to introduce Mrs. Andrea Vance, who will introduce our Students of the Month from the Early Childhood Learning Community. Our students are joining us tonight via Zoom, and you will see their photos. Let's see them all.
Good, good evening, everyone. Thank you for this opportunity for me to be able to present Students of the Month. I have the pleasure of presenting our first Student of the Month, which is Adeline Sandry. We call her Addie. And if you can see her smile on the screen, you'll know why she was not only chosen for her cute little smile, but her personality that comes through. Addie has made so much progress this school year, and at the beginning of the school year, she has been improving her way of communicating every day with her peers and teachers. She has also been interacting with her peers more throughout the day, and she comes to school every day with a smile, typically that one that's on the screen and is ready to work hard. Ms. Tabato and Ms. Melody, who are her teachers in the classroom, are so proud of her. Keep up the good work, Addie. And our second Student of the Month comes from our kindergarten, from Mrs. Barbara's class. And our Student of the Month is Anthony Carso. And Ms. Barbara says that Anthony comes to school every day, ready to learn and grow. He never hesitates to help his teacher or his friends when he sees that they are in need. He is a role model to all of the other students in the classroom and always chooses to make positive choices. Anthony's positive attitude always helps build their classroom community, and he is an absolute joy and role model to have in the class. Mrs. Barbara states that she is very honored to be his teacher. And again, you can see with Anthony's smile, it's very difficult to even make a choice between these two because they're so cute. So congratulations to Anthony and also Addie. And next, I'd like to introduce Mr. Heffron from Liberty.
All right. Thank you very much. Again, my name's Mitch Heffron. I'm the principal at Liberty, and I have two Students of the Month, and I am going to start with Sawyer Pedrick. And Sawyer is in Ms. Hobson's class, and this is what Ms. Hobson has to say about Sawyer. Sawyer has done an excellent job showing courage at the start of the school year. To start as a new student is very scary and not easy. But as he's become more comfortable and has made a tremendous amount of friends, he's learned a routine and is ready to have a great school year. We are so proud of Sawyer. Excellent job. Good job, Sawyer. And our next Student of the Month is Madeline Elk, and she was nominated by Mrs. Lavelia. And here's what Mrs. Lavelia has to say. Madeline is so Ranger strong in a great role model. She is always on task and puts forth 110% effort in all of her assignments. During group work or recess, she is constantly asking friends to join her and be part of the group. Madeline is a true asset to our classroom, and we are lucky to have her. Keep up the great work, Madeline. Good job. Yes, she is. And my pleasure to introduce Michael King. Okay, Michael King.
Round word here.
Yes.
Okay, guys. Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Thank you for letting us share some amazing young folks. When I got here, I'd heard a lot about Ranger strong, the words, force of everything that it means, and it has been a pleasure to get to know several of our students that have just exemplified what it means to be Ranger strong at the Academic Center. First up, from our Seven Blue Studio, is Kaylee Rowland. Kaylee has been caught time and time again showing great acts of service. One such instance, she helped a younger student who fell while on his way to the bus. She stayed with him to make sure that he was okay and then walked him onto the bus. Kaylee shows kindness on a daily basis and always works hard to do her best. The seventh grade Blue Studio is very proud of Kaylee. Next up is Max Sansavera from Seven Yellow. The seventh grade Yellow Team has selected Max Sansavera as its Student of the Month. Max has displayed many characteristics of being Ranger strong. He is a young man who shows pride in his work. He has gone above and beyond our expectations on classroom assignments and assessments. He is a definite asset in and out of the studio. Keep up the great work, Max, and continue to be Ranger strong. From H Green, we have Robert Perkey. Robert exemplifies Ranger strong from the beginning of every day until the end. His kind and respectful personality make all who encounter Robert smile. He is willing to take a chance when no one else will in the classroom, both teaching both his peers with his knowledge and his questions. We feel lucky to have Robert in H Green. We are so proud of him for being chosen as Student of the Month. From H Teal, last but not least, we have Dylan Adams. Dylan exemplifies all of the Ranger strong qualities. Dylan is respectful and kind of his peers and his teachers. He displays a wonderful example for students in his class by setting goals for himself and always striving to improve upon his skills by asking questions, volunteering in class, and putting in an immense amount of effort. Dylan radiates positivity and always puts a smile on your face. The eighth grade Teal team is honored and lucky to have a student like Dylan in class. And for those of you who are just curious, we are alternating by grades as we go throughout the year, so we're just trying to keep a focus as we go. Thank you very much for letting the Academic Center share, and I believe I am introducing Ms. Durkin. Come on down.
Yeah. Hello, I'm so excited to be here today. I am Melissa Durkin. I'm principal of Ranger High Tech Academy, and this year we are grades two through 11. So we've selected to recognize one of our high school learners and one of our two through eight learners as Learners of the Month. We have some very, very wonderful young men who were nominated and who have been working very hard this year. So first, we have Jack Albers, and Jack is in fourth grade. He was nominated by Coach Freeman and Coach Tobias. And this is what they had to say about Jack. Jack Albers was nominated by his teachers for displaying the Ranger strong characteristic of goal setting. Jack was selected because he has done a wonderful job setting ambitious goals for himself. He does a wonderful job advocating for himself to ensure that others are supporting him in reaching the goals he has set. Jack has dedicated himself to being Ranger strong at Ranger High Tech Academy. Jack's coaches are so proud of the progress he has made this school year. Congratulations, Jack, on being nominated as October's Student of the Month. And then from our high school, we have Justin Reese, who's in ninth grade, and he was nominated by Coach Hodie. And this is what Coach Hodie had to say about Justin. Justin Reese was nominated for displaying the Ranger strong characteristic of service, respect, ownership, and necessity. For our ELA9 Cultures and Conflict Project, Justin spent valuable time researching, organizing, and presenting various examples of how culture impacts relationships, communities, and national events. Justin proved his service to the task through his respect for the sensitive content involved and the necessity for exploring such relevant social issues. Throughout the project, Justin worked hard to meet deadlines and achieve his goal. His final presentation to the class wowed us with keen insights and understanding as well as an impressive selection of essential works in film, literature, music, and poetry. Congratulations, Justin, on being October's Student of the Month. And now I would like to introduce Mrs. Lormo from the high school.
Good evening. Good evening, everyone. I am very thrilled to introduce two of our Students of the Month. We do have eight Students of the Month every month at the building level, two from each grade level, and then we will be featuring our seniors each month at a board meeting. The first Senior Student of the Month is Lindsay Bennett. I think that picture is a few years old. Lindsay is an outstanding candidate for October's Student of the Month. Her teachers helped select her because of her strong work ethic and because she demonstrates everything that it means to be Ranger strong. She is an excellent student. While here at NRHS, she has pursued a challenging curriculum that has included several honors courses and several years of a foreign language. Lindsay is a student who takes pride in her school and who is very involved. Not only has she played soccer and run track, but she participates in French Club Champions for Life and is a critical member of the yearbook staff. Outside of school, she enjoys painting and shopping. Her dream college is Kent State, where she is looking into studying fashion design. With her talents and leadership skills, this student will no doubt have many opportunities wherever she goes. I am proud to count her among our two senior NRHS Students of the Month for October. Our second Student of the Month, our senior, is Dane Bartelbaugh. Dane is a true student leader at NRHS. He is a scholar and an athlete and a positive role model. He has pursued a challenging high school curriculum that includes high school courses, four years of a second language, and several AP classes, all while maintaining a high GPA. Dane is currently on our football team, but has also participated in tennis, trap shooting, varsity art, Champions for Life French Club, and Student Council. As important as any of these accomplishments is the fact that Dane is a student leader who models respect, kindness, thoughtfulness, as well as the principles that we champion with Ranger strong. Although his future college major is undecided, his dream job is to become president. Big plans, but surely with his talents and gifts, he will have many, many doors open to him. So I'm proud to honor him as one of our NRHS Students of the Month for October. And I'm last, so I don't.
Well, that was certainly a wonderful group of students that you all presented to us tonight. I do look forward to helping Dane with that campaign down the road. But none of that is possible, of course, without our incredible staff. And here to introduce our October Staff Members of the Month is our director, Amy Hostel.
Thank you, and congratulations to all of our students. On behalf of the Board of Education, it is my pleasure to congratulate two staff members for their positive impact on the district. Their selection is based on the input from their colleagues as to why they are deserving of this recognition. I am proud to announce Grace Rashad and Donna Napier as the October Staff Members of the Month. Grace was hired as a fourth grade teacher in 2014, initially at Wilcox Elementary, until the opening of the Academic Center in 2017. Grace continues to work as a fourth grade teacher at the Academic Center and has served on the building, on the school's building leadership team. In the words of those who nominated Mrs. Rashad, Grace is so kind-hearted. She loves to watch the students succeed. She will do various projects that involve students working together and collaborating. She will go out of her way to help staff members, and she is an amazing friend. She is an absolutely wonderful person inside and out. Another nominee stated, Mrs. Rashid, works endlessly to create and deliver engaging and enthusiastic lessons daily. Her passion for the students and positivity is so evident the second you walk into her classroom. Her students feel included and successful and are excited to learn. Grace also works diligently to plan and coordinate Ranger strong lessons and reading interventions and enrichment activities. Congratulations, Grace, and thank you for your fantastic work and dedication to our students. Donna Napier is our not certified staff member of the month. Ms. Napier was hired initially for food service in 2005. In the very next year, she became a paraprofessional instructional aide. Donna has worked in a number of roles as a paraprofessional in the district. Since moving to the high school in 2016, she has worked in our resource settings, working with our students with disabilities. Here are the words of Donna's colleagues shared about her and why she is deserving as the staff member of the month. Donna has not only been a dedicated employee at the North Ridgeville City Schools for many years, she has been an amazing team player in the high school intensive needs classes. Donna is someone who I can always depend on to step up and assist our students, however needed. Donna is professional, wise, knowledgeable, and cares deeply for the students in our classes. Another nominee stated, Donna deserves to be recognized for her commitment and passion that she has for her position in the intensive needs unit. She has worked for the district and in this unit for many years and has always been an excellent support for our students. She has built rapport with each and every student. Donna is also flexible and takes direction incredibly well. She is excellent when it comes to working with our students and in the building and in the community. Donna allows students think time to inquire and come to their own conclusions, and she has them working independently to foster their growth. Congratulations, Donna, and thank you for your fantastic work and dedication to our students. North Ridgeville City Schools are grateful to have staff who are dedicated to ensure our students' success. Congratulations to both of our winners this evening. We are very fortunate to have you as members of our team.
I know we were all very encouraged that there were an overwhelming amount of nominees this past month, and so we are excited to continue to honor our staff and students throughout the year. It was a very tough choice, but I know both Donna and Grace, and they are extremely deserving of this nomination and award, and we thank them for their service. Okay, our final report this evening is back to Mr. Heffron from Liberty Elementary, who would like to share reports of great things happening in our first and second grade building.
Hello again, everyone. I'd like to start my presentation by a couple thank yous. I'd like to start by thanking the Board of Education for their support in bringing PBIS to our district and your unwavering support in everything that we're doing with it. And the reason I wanted to start with the thank you is because we are seeing results. And I'm going to get a little bit more to that when I get into my presentation. However, I have more thank yous before I begin. I'd like to thank Mrs. Lee Armbruster. Thank you for bringing Ranger strong to our district. It was a great idea. Thank you. And I'd like to thank Ms. Vance. Thank you for coming to our district, and you know, it was a wonderful addition because you brought some structure to the lessons with the, we have a character strong program that we're going to be implementing in November. And the reason I'm excited about that is because teachers are going to be doing many lessons on teaching kids about behavior, character traits that we're going to be looking for. And at Liberty, here, I just want to give you some examples of how we're implementing Ranger strong throughout our building. And right now, we are doing, like I said, we're going to be implementing weekly lessons. We're going to be doing, rewarding kids with tickets for demonstrating the character traits that we're looking for. We've developed a strong club, and that's to teach young ladies and young men leadership qualities that will hopefully make them a well-rounded person. We have developed, we have golden awards for students that are demonstrating, or actually four classrooms are demonstrating these traits during music, PE, at recess, in the lunchroom, where they're going to get rewarded for excellent behavior. And we're also doing daily morning announcements that relate to Ranger strong traits, and we're relating those in the morning announcements to real-life applications, so the kids can see how it looks in real life. How do I know that this is working? I know it's working because I have kids unsolicited coming up to me and telling me what they're doing. And I'm just going to give you some examples. We were doing a fundraiser for the Lions Club, raising money for the community, raising food for the community care, and we talked about service, yes, and Ranger strong. And a young man used his tooth fairy money to buy food for this, and he said, I wanted to do my service for this. And I knew right then that we're on to something here. And not only that, when we were promoting it in our morning announcements, we doubled the amount of food that we did the year prior to COVID. I think we had like 900 pounds the year prior. This year, we had over 2,000 pounds, so we doubled it. That's just one example. I was walking through a classroom, and I had a student come up to me and said, Mr. Heffron, I was on the playground and I witnessed some boy being really aggressive, being mean to another boy. I told him to stop because we talked about that during a morning announcement, that, you know, being respectful is, and is going up to, and when you see something that's wrong, say something. And she was very proud of it, and I knew Mr. Kennedy's anti-bullying, October's anti-bullying is working as well because he said, however, Mr. Heffron, this is not bullying because it only happened once. So I told Mr. Kennedy, my school counselor, your lessons are working as well. I also had a student come up to me and say, I saw a student sitting by themselves on the buddy bench. I ran over and made sure that they started playing with us. I was very proud of that. It's just another demonstration of kids really buying into the program. And last but not least, I had students that when they're coming off the bus, they're saying hi. They're saying thank you. That's something that we're also working on a lot is when we say good morning, saying good morning back. It's saying hi, and that's a sign of respect, too. And these are all the things, and even our cafeteria staff is noticing kids are saying please and thank you more. So I just want you to know it's working. And in these times, I told the staff that, you know, for this year, we're looking at social-emotional with our kids. It's number one. Academics is number two, because if we get that right, the academics will come. And so I just wanted to tell you guys that it's working, and I wanted to show you some examples of some of our morning announcements. You don't have to stand for the pledge later.
You said fast forward to.
Yeah, about 30 seconds, yeah. Dramatic pause. I guess this is the best part.
All right, guys. So happy Mondays to you. Not only are. Sorry, I mentioned.
How about that kid giving up his tooth fairy money?
Thank you for the positive stories. That's so nice to hear. It really.
All right, I'm going to give you a summary of the. I'm going to recreate. Yeah. So what we do is we bring up real-life examples of respect, how like when you're in a disagreement, you don't talk over the other person. It's okay to disagree. That's a form of showing respect. Doing chores around your house without your parents having to ask you, that's a sign of, that's an example of showing respect. So we really want to show them specific examples of how to show respect, because just to say, hey, show respect, kids don't know what that is. And we try to bring it to life for them by acknowledging it when we see it, like kids picking up trash when it's not theirs and throwing it away. So that is basically what we do. We try to come up with real-life examples during the morning announcements and using humor mixed in there. Thank you.
Again, congratulations to all our students and staff members. We have absolutely amazing kids and some staff members here in North Ridgeville, so congratulations. It was nice seeing some kids here in attendance this evening. I'm looking forward to that. Continuing to see more and more of our students in person. Do we have any announcements this evening?
I have a very important announcement. Am I right with you?
Absolutely.
Cliffhanger, but Monday, November 1st, mark your calendars for the first North Ridgeville Family Engagement Evening. Details will come out tomorrow, but make sure it's on the calendar. Exciting opportunity for our students and families, and really a way for us as a district to thank our families for all that they do to support us and their children as they attend our schools and are otherwise engaged. So put that on the calendar.
Very exciting. Thank you. All right, here's an opportunity for hearing of the public. If there's anybody in attendance this evening that would like to address the Board of Education, now is your chance.
Ladies and gentlemen, my name is Mike McFone. I'm the president of North Ridgeville Education Association. I wanted to take this opportunity, if I could, because this is the meeting prior to the election next month, so I wanted to extend a thank you to Chris Niyazi from the North Ridgeville Education Association for all of your service on the board. Thank you. And I also wanted to make the announcement that NREA is endorsing our two incumbent candidates as well, Captain Kelly McCarthy and Marcy Saxon, as well as Jeff Grigsby. So if you get a chance to go out and vote for a school board, we would like to keep our members that are currently serving on and replace the one that is leaving with Jeff Grigsby, and that is the recommendation from the North Ridgeville Education Association.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Right into the consent agenda. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the consent agenda resolution as presented.
Second.
By Ms. Yetsey, second by Ms. McCarthy. Is there any discussion? C and N, roll call please.
This is Yetsey.
Yes.
This is McCarthy.
Yes.
This is Saxon.
Yes.
This is Tamira.
Yes.
Mr. Vaca.
Yes. We have one item for your consideration under the Finance Audit Report. We have a resolution to approve the financial reports for the month of September 2021. I move to approve the finance audit items at one meeting. I move to approve the finance audit items in one reading.
Second.
By myself, second by Ms. McCarthy. Is there any discussion? Roll call please.
Mr. Vaca.
Yes.
Mrs. McCarthy.
Yes.
Mrs. Yetsey.
Yes.
Mrs. Saxon.
Yes.
Mrs. Tamira.
Yes.
Moving to Human Resources Report, Ms. Saxon.
Yes, we have a few items to consider under the Human Resources Report. One certified staff leave replacement appointment, one support staff appointment, four special project supplemental contracts, one unpaid volunteer recognition, one certified staff adjustment, one support staff adjustment, and one support staff resignation. I move to approve the Human Resources items in one reading.
Second.
Saxon, second by Ms. Tamira. Any discussion?
Roll call please. Mrs. Saxon.
Yes.
Mrs. Tamira.
Yes.
Mrs. Yetsey.
Yes.
Mrs. McCarthy.
Yes.
Mr. Vaca.
Yes. It is recommended that the Board of Education adjourn this regular meeting.
No, second.
That's Tamira, Ms. McCarthy.
Mrs. Tamira.
Yes.
Mrs. McCarthy.
Yes.
Mrs. Yetsey.
Yes.
Mrs. Saxon.
Yes.
Mr. Vaca.
Yes.